To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, have a seat. She went on to roll call.
All right, Ronald Knupf.
Present.
Kenneth Hall.
Present.
Bonnie Aman.
Here.
Trevor Stone.
Here.
Ronald Glassick.
Here.
Judith Haldeman.
Here.
Jason Donahue.
Here.
Julia Kutzler.
Here.
Mayor Tony Prestash.
Present.
And Mason Small.
Present.
Thank you.
Hold on a second, there's a hornball on it, Stephanie's not here, do you think she could need help or, I don't know.
That's the first thought I got. It's because you're kind. Next we have hearing of persons, present. Anyone would like to speak, step up to the microphone, state your name for the record. Thank you. Is that, I don't know if I should wait a couple seconds.
She's just gonna go.
Okay. That was what?
You're celebrating, huh?
Yeah, that's how you come in on New Year's, right?
Yeah, just celebrating, make it noise.
Good evening, may.
Good.
We're on, on item number five on the agenda.
We're good.
Okay, a resolution designating depositories for Borough Funds.
Resolution number one dash twenty-five would designate the depositories for the Borough of Northampton.
Do I have a motion to designate the depositories for the Borough Funds?
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Hall, second by Mr. Stone, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Number six. A resolution establishing fees for the filing of applications, permits, licenses for the Borough of Northampton.
Resolution number two dash twenty-five establishes fees for permits and licenses. Some changes have occurred in the residential, commercial, and industrial project fees.
Do I have a motion to approve a resolution?
Make a motion.
Two dash twenty-five, motion by Mr. Knupf. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Mr. Donahue. Any questions?
Question.
Go ahead, Mr.
First one, first line actually has carnivals, and it's fifteen dollars per week, is that correct?
Yeah, we don't get many carnivals, but. It's just the one. Just the one the Exchange Club runs.
Oh, okay, alright, I thought we get more, when like the, the fair.
I mean, that, that is the one that Exchange Club runs.
Oh, okay.
Are you talking about the street fair?
No, actually the.
Community Days? Community Days, yeah, that's the one. They pay the attendant fees too for their. Yeah.
Cause I thought there was more fees that they pay for us to come here and do.
They do, they have their health licenses that they pay each gender has to come in and then Ted goes out and meets with every all.
So the fifteen dollars a week is just for the change?
Just for the permit, yeah.
That's fine, okay.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item number seven. A resolution authorizing the appointment of sewage enforcement officer for twenty twenty-five. Also the appointment of an engineering firm, including fees for twenty twenty-five.
Resolution number three dash twenty-five appoints the sewage enforcement officer and allows us to charge potential developers for engineering fees that are incurred by the Borough. We use Lehigh Engineering Associates Incorporated for these services.
Make a motion to move forward with that?
Motion by, by Mr. Glassick, do I have a second?
Second.
By Miss Aman, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. A resolution authorizing the appointment of a building code official for twenty twenty-five.
Resolution four dash twenty-five appoints David Shields, president of Key Codes Inspection Agency, as our building code official for twenty twenty-five.
Do I have a motion to appoint Mr. Shields?
Make a motion.
By Mr. Knupf. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Mr. Stone. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstain.
Okay, what, uh, Ms. Haldeman abstain, remark that, thank you, motion passed. Ordinance number twelve thirty-seven.
Ordinance of the Borough of Northampton, Northampton County, Pennsylvania, fixing the tax rate at fourteen point zero mils for the year twenty twenty-five.
Do you have a motion to fix the tax rate at fourteen point zero mils?
Make a motion.
By Mr. Glassick, second?
Second.
Aman or Stone?
Go ahead.
It's your choice.
Ms. Aman? Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to appointments to the Planning Commission.
Mr. Donald Sorensis is seeking reappointment for a four-year term to the Planning Commission, which will expire on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight. And also, Mr. Kenneth Hall is seeking reappointment for a four-year term to the Planning Commission, which will also expire on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight.
Thank you, should these be separate motions, thank you. Do I have a motion to appoint Mr. Donald Sorensis to a four-year term to the Planning Commission?
Make a motion.
By Mr. Knupf, do I have a second?
Second.
By Mr. Hall, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Our next appointment to the Planning Commission, Mr. Kenneth Hall.
I make a motion to appoint Kenneth Hall.
Ms. Aman made a motion to, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stone, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Is there an extension from this?
Oh, there was an abstain, I did not hear you, thank you, one abstain, thank you. Consider preliminary and final plan approval of Horwith Leasing.
On November thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, Horwith Leasing Incorporated appeared before the Planning Commission for preliminary and final approval of a land development plan to install relocatable storage units on an existing impervious gravel lot at the site. This was approved by Planning Commission.
Do I have a motion to approve this final plan? For Horwith.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Stone, do I have a second?
Second.
By Mr. Donahue, any questions?
Question.
Go ahead.
Are these those open dumpsters that he puts out there on the, along the trail? This is a separate area?
No, well, no. It's on the other side of the Horwith Drive from where their property is, there's a little hill that goes up by the trail, but it's not, it's not the open dumpster there.
It's not the open, and it's not open dumpsters sitting there?
No.
Okay.
It's his plan, Mr. Glassick.
Oh. Six-sided relocable with a large piece of equipment. So they're left for. Storage containers, they're full-sized storage containers. Perfect, thank you. Yep.
Any other questions?
No other questions, no?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Consider request for educational reimbursement.
Enclosed in your packet is a letter from Assistant Borough Manager Jerry Sorensis requesting educational reimbursement for courses he will be taking in twenty twenty-five.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion. To approve it and pay for it.
Pardon?
I make a motion to approve it and pay for it.
Oh, okay, that's what I thought you said.
That's what it's asking, I think.
Right, it is. That is exactly what it's asking for, thank you, Mr. Glassick.
You're welcome.
Are we fully paying this, or it's just the funds that are given out, provided?
It's to twenty twenty-four.
And the twenty twenty-five, towards twenty twenty-five.
Right.
Cause they didn't use them in twenty twenty-four, is that correct?
I tried to get classes at the end of the sea, end of the year to get into it, but the way the scheduling was going, I just couldn't get on.
Basically asked for a rollover.
Yeah, for the one year, yeah.
Okay. Any other question? All those in favor?
We don't have a second.
I thought I had a second too.
Second.
You gonna second that?
Second first.
Okay, let's keep moving. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, thank goodness, Jerry.
That's those memory classes, right?
Yeah. Brian should join those too then, I think, I have no idea what you're referring to yet.
Moving on to reports from committees. Administration and Finance, Mr. Hall.
Thank you. There are a hundred twenty-one livestream views of December nineteenth council meeting. Borough's yearly audit will be held for five days in mid-February. It will be conducted by Campbell, Rappel, and Eurocits, end of report.
Thank you, Building, Land and Recreation, Ms. Haldeman.
Thank you, the Borough received twenty thousand dollars from the Gro Norco grant fund for playground equipment at Canal Street Park. There will be new fees for the swimming pool this year, they will affect both daily and family patches, be on the lookout for no price, new prices when tickets go on sale, end of report.
Thank you. Code and Police, Mr. Stone.
Yes, thank you, a new system for code enforcement citations is being worked on with the Borough Council and our solicitor. This will be introduced to the public in the coming months, two new patrolmen, Mark Sortino and Matthew Jungbear will start their first days with the Borough of Monday, January sixth, two thousand twenty-five, so look forward to that. Residential and commercial inspection fees with Key Co's Inspection Agency have increased by five percent for twenty twenty-five, end of report.
Thank you. Fire and Health, Mrs. Aman.
Thank you, the monthly fire department breakfast will be held on Sunday, January twelfth, from eight to eleven a.m. There is no monthly health report because there was no Board of Health meeting in the month of December, end of report.
Thank you, Public Works and Sewer, Mr. Glassick.
Thank you, Public Works crews have been working throughout the town to fill potholes, this will continue in the upcoming weeks. On Monday, December thirtieth, Public Works cleaned the abundance of leaves that had built up in the West Alley. A big thank you to the Public Works Department for their work through the Borough's Administration Building, which you'll see the renovations being done in the lobby for the first few weeks, it looks beautiful, end of report.
Thank you, Mr. Glassick. Reports from council members, who will be starting with Mr. Hall.
Thank you. Well, I don't know how much this, tell everybody's Christmas was. Had a good Christmas season, and wish everybody a happy and healthy New Year.
Thank you.
End of report.
Mr. Stone.
I'll pick two, I just wanted to thank Donald Sorensis and Councilman Hall for reappointing, reappointing for the Planning Commission, end of report.
Thank you, Ms. Haldeman.
I have nothing, thank you very much, I'm gonna yield back the balance of my time to the chair.
For real?
For real?
For real. Mr. Knupf.
Oh, congratulations, Mr. Hall and Jerry, for your reappointments.
That's not, yeah, Don, Don Sorensis.
Don, 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 sorry. Wrong, wrong Sorensis.
Yeah.
Twenty, twenty, twenty-five will bring a new chapter here. I like, I look forward to serve my second term on council with all members. And hoping all Borough residents will enjoy the Borough improvements from parks, businesses, and all services the Borough provides. Let's make Northampton the town of opportunity, end of report.
Well, thank you, sir, Mr. Glassick.
I have a long list of things, so you might wanna go to somebody else, no, I don't. I do have a couple of questions, one, is, has there been discussion with even Campbell, Rappel, and Eurocits for a discount because they also do the MBMA? Since they're doing both of the Borough's utility or entities, couldn't they see if we can get some kind of discount, is it worth asking?
We can talk to them about it, yeah.
I don't, I don't ever see a discount that they offer, but prices go up and they do both, both are Public Works as well as the Borough now. Also, the upcoming, upcoming contracts on everything, is it being reviewed or just when it's coming due on?
Yeah, part of, I mean.
Some of them have two and three-year.
Right, yeah, so all of them we look at and, you know, including one that you referenced very frequently.
Yeah, I know.
We, we, we do look at them, there's something that I'm gonna talk about later that we already looked at.
Okay, congrats to Donald and Kenny for their time and service that they provided the Borough. And I guess with the garbage, it's in one of my questions, when is that contract up, at the end of this twenty twenty-five?
It'll be advertised around August, September of this year, for next year.
Okay, cause I did see the eighty-eight was the quarterly payment, correct, or?
Monthly payment, yeah.
Monthly payment of eighty-eight thousand. Okay, thank you, end of, end of my report.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue.
I just wanna wish everybody a happy New Year, end of report.
Thank you. Ms. Aman.
I just have one thing, and I don't know if there's anything that can be done about it, but if somebody has any suggestions for me to help my neighbors contain their garbage where it needs to be, especially on these windy days, our alley is one big garbage mess, week after week after week. And I keep getting these calls from the same neighbor complaining because it's the same neighbors across the alley from her that are habitual with putting their garbage out ahead of the pickup time that it should be out. The birds tear it apart, the wind tears it apart, it's just a mess. So if anybody has any ideas or suggestions to help me help them, I would appreciate it, end of report.
Thank you. Mayor.
Thank you, just wanna wish everyone a very happy New Year, may all your resolutions and opportunities come true, that could be as successful as you wanna be and make those improvements. We have a Ukrainian Christmas, the Orthodox Christmas next week to look forward to as our season winds down. And I have received some questions and comments on road construction in town, specifically Barrington Avenue, but just wanna let everybody know that a lot of these projects have a seasonality to them, and as much as anyone here on council would like to do, especially our Borough Manager, there's just a time that they need to be done specifically, and they can't be done now in the winter, it's a matter of supplies, a matter of resources, of manpower, et cetera. So patience is a key to a lot of these projects, no one here is sitting on any of the projects that can be done and need to be done. Council keeps moving ahead very encouragingly to get things done, and our Borough Manager and assistant are doing all they can to keep that going, and they are very successful in that, and they have done a great deal of things way ahead of schedule despite their early days in their careers. So just, patience is key right now, and as old football coach Lou Holtz once said, patience is a virtue, no no matter how many people are on the job, it still takes a woman nine months to have a baby, so, keep that in mind, yes, from Lou Holtz. So anyway, just please keep that in mind, and congratulations Kenny and Donahue for coming back on and serving. And more compliments are also coming in on our Christmas tree. It has been, I've heard no more complaints or derisive comments about it, so know that this tradition is a new tradition, it's gonna be here and it's gonna be even more successful next year, planning is already underway, so, everybody, happy New Year, thank you.
Mason, I did not forget you. May I go to Mason's, sir?
Thank you.
Please do.
I just wanted to wish everyone a happy and healthy New Year, end of report.
His dad is.
Yes.
Okay, I'm waiting for news, okay. Thank you. Attorney Stewart.
Yes, I am, as referenced in the report, working on an updating ordinance with regard to code enforcement procedures, and have also been involved in, as also referenced, reviewing some of the contracts that are coming due, and, and I appreciate that that's, that process has, has been undertaken and, and very smooth. I will also mention that just before the Christmas holiday, I received my Cindy Miles Adaptive Foundation, did I mess that up? Quarters that I ordered, and it's lovely, and I, I think it's, it's fantastic, you know, if you haven't checked out their merchandise, check out their merchandise.
You were. Okay. Thank you.
In different part?
One of the things that we're gonna be looking at is having our attorney draft an ordinance for overnight parking in, on our parking lots in the Borough. Right now, we, we've been told that we need an ordinance, or update the one we have, so that's one of the things. We've had an issue with the parking of tractor trailers on our Borough property in the back. So, right now, we'd like to start looking into that and get that moving as soon as possible. With all of the things that we have going on the Borough, that may not be an urgent matter, but it is something that I'd like to take care of.
We can address that readily.
Pardon?
I can address that readily, that's, that's no problem.
Thank you. That's the only thing that I have. Mr. Sorensis.
Yes, partially to address the Bowman's concerns about the garbage, I will say that this year the office did send out the garbage bills ourselves, there was a lot of folding, a lot of making, uh, putting something together paperwork, but in that package, that paper, there's gonna be a little flyer in there that describes everything for, kind of rules, regulations with garbage bills, and garbage. It does say in there, all garbage needs to be in trash cans with lids. It is something that we are trying to address more often and keep it under control, try to, it's, I know it's very difficult to do all the time, but it is one thing we're trying to get a little more control of. So, but it is something, it's definitely on our radar. Secondly, I just wanna say thank you for, you know, allowing me to continue some education classes and, and approving my.
Thank you.
Educational stuff. That's all I got, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Glassick.
All right, only got two things, first thing is, in addition to the twenty thousand dollars we got from Gro Norco, we did get seven thousand dollars for our movies in the park that we're looking to do this summer. That is a three to one, so we only have to give a little bit on that back, but that's something that we're gonna have to, Jerry and I will sit down probably with Rich and Public Works and kind of work out how that's gonna all work out, but it's good news, I just found that out today. So, it's something definitely we can do to entertain and provide a good place for kids and parents to go to on a Friday night over the summer. Second thing is kind of playing off a run, and Stephanie was talking about with contract, one of the things that Jerry and I, Rich, Andrew Marzen, Keith, and David Lear all looked at is, currently we use GoGov for our app, that we get updates on, that we have access to. They did have options for different types of software for code and zoning, and we all, we had, what, two meetings for each one, code zoning, and two with Public Works, cause they also have options, and what we decided was that we felt it would be a better fit to go with them, so we will ultimately have with them permits for zoning, we'll have code enforcement through it, and they do speak with each other, so when anything, say they haven't done something, or they haven't paid something, and they wanna request a permit, it also lets zoning know as well. Public Works is now gonna be able to have automated job listings, so they can send it to one another, they can talk to another, they can talk to residents. If a resident has something, whether they see like a pothole or some issue, they can take a picture of it, it'll automatically give the location of where it is, and then they can communicate that, directly with the resident if that's what they would like to do. And then, in addition with the app, all four of those together is cheaper than the current company we have for zoning and code enforcement. So, we're gaining all of that and still paying less money, and we all feel that it is a better fit overall. So that is just one of the things we've looked at recently that will be saving us money, and in addition, they are giving us three months free for it, by doing it by the end of the year. So, not a, a huge amount, but it is enough. Obviously, as the years go on, just like it is with the company we have now, prices will increase by the year or depending, but it is a step forward, I think, in the right direction with a lot of things. Jerry and all of us have really talked about it for a good amount of time, and we've been doing, we're going back and forth on this since at least August, maybe, and we, you know, we signed it last week, and we are very excited, so that should be, I'll be giving you updates as we go, I imagine the Public Works one will probably be the first one that gets done because we already have the app infrastructure, and that will go directly on there as well.
Question for Brian, I mean with the Public Works on a monthly basis, is the time clock working yet?
Yeah, it's been, it's been working for months.
And they can go in and log it in, right, and stuff like that?
Yep, they can do it, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
And, great job with the movies in the park.
I'm excited, I think it'll be really nice.
Brian, sorry, what was the app that you?
GoGov.
GoGov?
Yep.
Is there something specific that you spoke to, to, do you just, can I Google GoGov?
You can, yeah, you can go, they have their own website, and they have all of that stuff, there, I can, I, I. After the meeting, I can get your, I can send you the contact person I have, if you would.
The small township I live in would probably take advantage of the savings.
Absolutely, they've been, they, and the one thing that's great about them to compare with what we do now, a lot of companies do billable hours, so anytime you have a question or you need help with something, they will send you an invoice. They have, they don't do that, so it's unlimited training, anytime you need something adjusted, whether it be something they have to add on to it, or you need help with something, it's totally free. So, and all in all, we have, there's not been a single complaint that we've had with them, so, yeah, absolutely, I'll pass along differently.
Yeah, I'll, I'll give you a card, what do we have to do?
I do have one, I am, it's, um, we acquired a dumpster on our street this week, today. If I know and I believe you take care, there's cones there that mark that there was no parking there for the day, and I didn't know what it was for or whatever, but then they come home, parking's terrible there, turning into that street is terrible. I believe when they're out there, they switch up cones around them, or especially where that one sits, it's an accident waiting to happen, so. Whether we take the two cones that are there, I don't know why they were there, it's their marking not to park for the day, but I think that one there definitely should have.
I moved the dumpster there, but the, the problem is where the residence is at, they'll be walking forever with stuff in the dumpster.
Who is, who is the one that it's for, can I ask?
What's that?
Would, you know, we know which household that's.
The, the house that, the house on the corner that faces Lincoln Avenue would be the row home that faces Twenty First Street behind it.
Gotcha.
There's no, you know as well as I do how bad that alley's parked up, like there's not even any.
Yeah, 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 definitely.
They can't put it on Twenty First Street, so I tried to split the difference.
They've definitely got to mark that though, cause you turn in, that's just a, right there.
I know, but like I looked at all the angles.
Oh, no, they, they, probably the lesser, the evil.
And then to park it right in front of that, like move it down and park it in front of that, I know it's a driveway, but park it right in front of his house, so I tried to keep it off to the side a little bit.
Like, if they can keep that, they put those cones like, or either use those cones, that they don't want the rest of the parking on the remainder of that street, they keeping that whole block?
I, no, they're only approved for where the dumpster goes, and that's.
Okay, cause they had the whole thing still blocked off, cause everybody moved the street ultimately, so there's no parking on our street now tonight, but I thought it was something they were doing during the day, so if we could make sure that they have that thing cloned out on the outer corner, so somebody don't come on, come around the corner and T-bone it.
I did tell them. Wanna check it?
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move on, cause we done this pretty fast tonight, does anybody else have anything to say? No? Okay, I need an approval to pay the bills. Do I have a motion to pay the bills?
Motion.
By Mr. Donahue. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Mr. Stone. Any questions?
Yes, some questions.
Go ahead.
I'll try to make it quick. The animal control microchips.
Yeah, that was something from the offering, we just never got the bill, this is us just getting the bill now.
Okay, thank you. Uh, second page, what, what, was our light pole knocked over?
Yeah, branch fell a little bit ago, was it November, fell on, on one of the light poles and knocked it down.
Okay, so, so it's our expense, okay, was, I was wondering if it was a car accident or something like that?
No, it was in the park.
What's the, and again, I know I'm supporting the DARE program, but it's thirty-three hundred dollars? For the DARE program supplies, is that granted, is that like a grant that comes back to us then?
No, we have a budgeted, a light item, a budget for DARE, and then the school district, uh, re, uh, reverses for a lot of the items.
Okay.
It's kind of basically gets split.
Okay.
Half and half.
Thank you. Um, the Tahoe equipment, fourteen thousand, thirty-two dollars?
Yeah, that was from last year.
Oh.
Took that long to get everything in and prices went up a little bit, of course.
Okay. I'm not trying to pick on stuff, I'm just asking a question.
Well, we have, I've discussed with Brian frequently, like till they get the stuff in, you wait forever for everything and. Unfortunately, now it happens.
Um, thank you for that, chief. The rec center, there's six thousand, six fifteen, is that equipment again?
Yeah, they were getting, uh, abduction machine.
Okay, abduction.
Mm-hmm.
Takes your abs down?
Exactly.
Well, I recently joined there and I, and I do think we have quite extensive, great equipment there, and it's just nice to see the people in the morning with the community that's out there, so I think it's well worth it that we can get that stuff. Christmas tree supplies for twenty-nine hundred dollars?
Yep, it's part of the tree lighting.
Okay. Moving forward, that's good stuff. Uh, I seen the Public Works for, I mean, the Republic Services for the eighty-eight thousand.
Yep.
Um, sludge removal is obviously down, ten thousand dollars, four twenty-six because of the water usage and the amount of rain that we had.
Yes, it's been quite beneficial lately.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Now, can I just ask, I'm sorry. A, a question, now that he mentioned animal control, is there an update on that, when we talked about it, we were told that she only does cats and we were.
Only does dogs.
She only does dogs, not cats.
Correct.
And that's gonna stay like that, that she only does dogs?
That is a conversation that I think we all need to have.
Okay.
I think it's part of the job.
It's part of the case. Why don't we plan on that maybe for two, in two weeks?
Okay.
Good point.
Alright, thank you.
Anyone else?
Well, what's the status of our emergency management plan to the Borough, to the county?
That, Mr. Hall?
Are we any closer than he? I'm just concerned in terms of our responsiveness to, to Northampton County, not putting anything in jeopardy in terms of funding, you know, our county executives, you don't wanna. Attention, Stan.
Just gotta be on their, on their, um, their list for their, their plan, and there's the old plans.
But that's like, what, twenty seventeen?
Updated and, and whatever, get newer information, so then, uh, at for, anything we don't get, then unless we request them for services or something.
We have a motion on the floor. To pay the bills. Sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Motion adjourned.
Motion to adjourn, by Mr. Hall, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Donahue, leading the jury.